Yeah.
Very good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Park Township Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting for Monday, October 7, 2024. Uh, call the meeting to order. Uh, one of our first items to do is the, is the look at the agenda. So I'll look for a, uh, motion to approve the agendas. As published.
So moved.
Support.
We have support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, our agenda's approved and we'll move forward. Uh, next item is our minutes from our last ZBA meeting of September 9. Um, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to review and take a look at that, but. Let's open it up for any comments or edits that are necessary.
Mr. Carroll proposed correction to the minutes on page two. Fourth paragraph. The last sentence in that paragraph, uh, I think it should read. It currently reads, note for the record that larger quests were over an acre in size or did not have an attached garage. I think. That should read, note for the record that other properties noted by the applicant were. Over an acre in size or did not have an attached garage.
Okay, that sounds. Sounds fair. Yeah, something, something was wrong with that. Okay, so we'll strike that and amend. As you noted. Any other? Any other items? Had anybody noticed? Okay, look for approval to amend last meeting's agenda with the comments made.
Support.
So moved.
You can't hear me either? My mic is on. Can, can anybody else not hear me? Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that everybody else. I'm hearing that everybody else can hear me right now. So. But can you hear me in the back row? Okay.
Maybe you could move to the center of the room. There might be better acoustic.
Yeah, this room could be a little problematic sometimes for acoustics.
Sir, there's a loop in this room. So if you have a hearing aid, you might be able to connect with your hearing aid. So here you go. I understand there's a loop in this room. If you have a hearing aid, you can connect to the loop. Thank you.
So all in favor, we had support of the, of the meeting agenda with, with amendments made. All support? With it, with the minutes? Or sorry. The minutes from last meeting. Uh, we had approval and support for the amendments made. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to our next item is public hearing number one. Mr. Fink, I'd ask that you introduce that for us.
I most certainly can. Um. So, uh, we have a request. Uh, this is for public hearing number one, a request by bespoke homes LLC on behalf of. Farrell Lawler for a side setback of five feet or 10 feet is required. Uh, per section thirty eight, two forty six, the park township code ordinances. Uh, lands are located at three, three, nine, nine Maple Avenue. They're located in the R two Lake Shore Residence District and the Edgewood Beach Overlay District. Um, my, uh, reading of this application and certainly confer with the applicant is that, uh, in front of you, you have your site plan. The, uh, outline in red, uh, looks like the, um, existing cottage with the outline in black. Uh, being the overlay of the new cottage. If I look at the setbacks, uh, towards the northern setback and the southern setback. The vast majority of the northern and southern setback are being reduced. The, uh, the cottage is being narrowed, uh, in its entirety on the site. Um. And in terms of the deck, we were informed, uh, while albeit the deck is up against the setback, we were informed at the point where the deck. Is, uh, up, up against the setback, the grade is less than thirty inches, so it would therefore comply. Um, the only thing I would ask of the applicants to confirm is what is the front yard setback off of Maple Avenue? And what is the rear yard setback so that that would comply with section thirty eight, two sixty two? It was not advertised for a front yard setback, uh, but that would be something that I would confirm.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I guess I, I'm going to ask, is the applicant present tonight? If they have some words that they'd like to share of, if you could step up to the podium, sign in. Uh, with your name. Address and. You could, you could speak to it. That'd be great.
Uh, my name is Matt Reinsma. I'm the owner of bespoke homes. Address of the business is five, 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 uh, Northland Drive, Suite A in Rockford. There's one small correction to what Howard said. If I, if I heard him correct. We're not asking for a five foot setback, but a seven foot.
So, um, I. Um, if that's the case, then I would recommend, um, that, uh, this be re-advertized and postponed, and I will say why. Um, when I received the packet, um, I looked at that as well. I saw, uh, the applicant's application had indicated a seven foot setback where ten was required. But it was advertised for a five foot setback where ten is required. I looked at the scale, unfortunately. Um, uh, when, when we submit these plans, really be careful to the applicant to submit a full set scaled. Um, because when I looked at this plan, it, the way it printed off, it's not scaled. But if I look at the north setback. Um. Uh, I'm seeing the line, um, of the existing house and I see seven feet on that setback. Um, and, but it goes past the house. And so, um, I looked at that and thought, okay, well then it, it, then the. Previous, uh, zoning administrator had advertised it for five, and then I, I assumed that five was correct based on. Um, based on that. Uh, I can show you what I'm looking at, but. That's a, a, up to, uh, that would be up to the, uh, um, the, the body. Um, I would. I, i- if in fact it is a seven foot setback. I, I would recommend to, uh, postpone and re-advertise because it was advertised as five. Crystal, I would, I, I would, I would potentially defer to, to Ms. Morgan.
Howard, if I may. Seven is better than five. So if it was advertised for five, and it's actually better. Um. What was advertised is a worst case scenario. Not the better case that we're asking for at seven. With regards to holding the hearing, and the only reason I pressed to hold the hearing is winter is bearing down on us and we'd very much like to get this. Um, settled one way or another so that we can continue and, and progress. That said, I'm not trying to press this. It, it, or in any kind of aggressive manner, just. Just wanted to note that seven foot is much better than five.
So for the record, Mr. Fink, is it, are you, are we saying that the adverti- was it an error on the township's part in advertising it this way? Or is it submitted on the application incorrectly to the township?
Um, so i- i- if, if it is seven feet, it was submitted to the applicant, to the township correctly, but the township aired and advertised it for five.
I see.
I, when I looked at this. And I looked at the scale here, I also read it in about. And I'm going to show the applicant. If I can ask the applicant a question.
Yeah, please.
So. My apologies because I can't see this. If I'm, if I'm looking at that measurement right there, it says seven feet. And that point is right here, the computer, the, the line of the house.
Yeah, sure. I can see where the error is, uh, you know, occurring. Um, but it.
Says here.
I see this is, I get you. I, now I'm seeing it.
I may have another document that might help, um, you visualize that a little better.
Now I see it.
Yeah, a- and we did ask if full size sentence needed and that they didn't indicate that it was. Let me see here. Yeah, so. I. So up to you guys. Yeah, understood. Yep.
In my opinion, the notice is legally sufficient. The difficulty we have is we've received some correspondence in opposition to this. Request and it's hard to know. Whether those would be the same or different if the authors of those were aware that it was seven. I, I also noted there was one part where it said eight. Um. As opposed to five. So I think legally we can proceed. Um. But, but that's certainly a, a risk, I guess.
Sure, I understand.
Well, I guess our next step here. Normally would be to open the public comment, but, um. I, I don't know. Want to do that.
They concerned you open what else?
Yeah.
If I would raise a recommendation.
Yes, please.
What I would do is regardless of whether or not you're going to postpone or not. I would have the public hearing tonight, open the public hearing. Um, and, uh, I don't know if you decide to postpone, you can always leave the public hearing open. Till the next meeting and allow for others to comment, but I certainly would give, um, those in the audience that wish to comment, uh, an opportunity and presence to comment. On the record as a public hearing. So I would open the public hearing. I just wouldn't necessarily close it until you decide whether or not you're going to hear the application today.
Okay, I think that's. It's a great idea and I'll pursue that. So at this moment, I'll open it up for public comment. If there's anyone that's here that wants to speak for or against. This, this item, please step to the podium and sign in and tell us your name as well.
Yep. Uh, my name is Chris Bosch. I live at one, seven, two, eight, four North Street. That's inside the Edgewood Beach Association. Um. I've had a chance to review. I had some of the same questions as to, uh, the setbacks. But looking at the ZBA application, the plans are beautiful. It's a beau- beautiful home, absolutely gorgeous. Um, cool house design. It's just a little bit bigger envelope than what it needs to be. Um, I'm asking the zoning board to reject the variance requests. Uh, as you know, Edgewood Beach is one of the historical neighborhoods, um, that we have out here in Park Township. Um, we've recently had, uh, several meetings. With our, um, leadership discussing what do we want to do? How do we want to work with these types of, um, homeowners? That are wanting to build something new and something different. I will tell you in Edgewood, love the place, but it's tight. And when we start allowing different variances. It's going to get tighter and tighter and tighter, and that makes for challenges when you're trying to build stuff. So I'm recommending to stay with the, uh, the ten foot variance on the north side. We need to stay with the rules that we have created. The biggest concern we have obviously was setting precedent. Is it might not be affecting me per se right now because it's not my direct neighbor. My cottage is about a hundred feet, hundred and ten feet from the property, um, that we're talking about tonight. But that doesn't keep the neighbor from next to me saying, well. You know, if eight's good, how about seven, or if seven's good, let's go with five, and it just continues to get tighter and tighter. Um, part of the enjoyment out there is we do have a, a little bit of elbow room. It's tight, but we have a little bit of elbow room. So I'm asking, uh, to continue that. The thing that struck me most was the question about the, uh, practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships. And that kind of struck me when I was reading through that. I thought to myself. Is it fair that I want a bigger house on a smaller lot? Creating hardships for someone else, but reducing my hardship. I think that's the question that's before the board right now. Is that, uh, is it fair for the owners on the north side? To be somehow disadvantaged because someone wants a slightly bigger home, whether it's two feet wider or three feet wider or five feet wider. I don't know what it is right now. Um, but that very concept disadvantages someone else, and I don't think that that's right. And I don't think that's fair, nor do I think it's just here in Park Township. Uh, moving on to the deck, um, line of sight to the water and sunset. Is the reason we all live out there is we want the sunsets and the ability to see the, the water and the, the, uh, the water lapping up onto the shoreline. Um. What they're asking for in terms of the height is just the beginning. As we all know, a deck's not a deck. Without a table and chairs and furniture and a fire pit and a grill. All those are going to reduce the ability for neighbors to see. Uh, north to south, uh, at some of those properties, especially if there's going to be any removal of any trees. It's go- it's going to remove the, uh, the, the line of sight and you'll be looking at other things. Um. Lastly. Um, the current bump out, if you look at it, there's a small bump out on the north side. That is at that five foot right now. That doesn't go the entire length of the house. Um, so I'm not sure if we're going five, seven, eight, uh, whatever that request is, but. I'm asking to stay with ten so that it's uniform and the people to the north aren't necessarily adversely affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us? Please.
Drew Johnson, I live at one, seven, two, two, six South Street. I'm now in my tenth year and getting ready to move to Florida, but, uh. I think we created a new code, which you asked us to do, a building code, which we have done. And if you don't have copies, you should have because it talks about just exactly what's going on here tonight. That we've decided this is how we want our association then to go forward. So if that's the first thing I'd ask, the second thing is, um. You know, um. I don't even know these people. They've, they've never really been active in our association, our community. Uh, the, I don't know them. They've never been involved in any of the projects that we've had, Chris and I and others as far as maintain the association and. And improving the association. I look forward to them being here and hopefully getting involved. Never had any emails or anything from them to, you know, give their advice or how they want to go forward. I'm sure they pay their dues. There'd be somebody screaming. Uh, five hundred bucks, not a big deal, but. So we just finished our last major project. We put in some beautiful stairway. And the only way I got approval to do that was because I have to have engineered scaled drawings, a D-size print. Now that needs to be done here. For all of us to see, including you. I mean, I don't know how you're going to allow them to give you this little eight and a half by eleven, eleven by seventeen. Um. What's his name? The building inspector won't allow it. He wouldn't sign off on it. So I generated thanks to a couple of thousand dollars worth of engineering. We have a full set of drawings. I think. The rest of this community, even though I'm not going to be there, deserves that from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, my name is Jody Willett and I live at three, three. What are you? Three, four, one, one, uh, Maple. Uh, I am the neighbor on the north. And so, uh, my husband and I both wanted to be here and he's away on a business trip. So, uh, we have looked at, um, everything that we've all talked about tonight. And we also would like for us to stick to the, uh, the regulations and the guidelines that we as a, an association. And along with Park Township agreed upon a few years ago, uh, for all the reasons that Chris and Drew just said. But also, uh, when in talking about the little outcrop that ju- that, um, bumps out, it's very small. And it's not very tall. And so I do have a fair, uh, about a seven foot privacy fence. And so it doesn't bother us, uh, you know, but. Even though they're going to be going back just a little bit, now it's going to be much, much taller and fifty feet longer. And, um, it takes away from the beauty of our neighborhood, the, uh, the uniqueness of it. We are. Very, very close already. And so with the removal of all the trees that it will take to build this. Um, it does take away from the privacy, the little privacy we all have. Um, because now everybody will be looking down on top of us and it'll, it keeps our view, uh, where we are, our views will be blocked, theirs will not. And so I do ask that with all the time and effort that has been put into over the past years. Of creating these guidelines that you came to us and asked our association to do with you, and we came up with them for this reason alone. So that we wouldn't have to do this because this creates awkwardness between neighbors now. And I have to say, oh, I don't want that. Um, and so I ask you to deny that and keep the regulations the way they're supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gary DeGraff. I live at four, nine, nine, seven Roosevelt Beach up in, uh, Port Sheldon Township. But I came here about a year ago asking to remodel this cottage. And I believe off memory, we are two feet, eight inches off the north property line. And only three foot something off the south, and we were allowed to square off the whole cottage. Building out to those narrow lot lines with no problem. That was approved by the township. We just got into it and realized the expense wasn't worth it. So we decided then to start over. So the township had approved those lot lines and expanding the cottage within those edges further forward. At one time. So to say five foot, seven foot setback on the north or south side. You approved it less than that before. I didn't bring that paperwork with me. I didn't expect that argument here, but that's been approved in the past. That was a little over a year ago. And I was the one who spirited this. I just wanted to say side yard setback was approved and. By Ed and his wife, they didn't have an issue with it when the township came out and asked them. About that narrow setback. So I guess we're talking heath right now, but not side yard because that was approved at one time.
Remind me, what was your first name again?
Gary.
Gary.
Graff, yep.
What was the, do you know how long ago that was?
It's just a little over a year ago. I think we were trying to. Yeah, trying to do something, uh, in time for winter. Then we just realized that the costs were there, but I can email it to anyone here. So.
Thank you.
I have that correspondence. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To Howard's point here. Larger documents and cleaner definition on the setbacks would I think help. Um. But yes. With regards to the length of the building, it's only about fifteen feet longer than what it is now. Um, Gary's correct. It currently is a two and a half feet setback from the property line. We're asking for that to go to seven. Um, there was a lot of care given to concern for the neighbors. Um. The windows that would look to the north are very limited and higher on the bedroom side, which matches their bedroom side. Um, the deck, the current location of the current deck does not change. So. We're not making that condition worse in any way. It, the same views, everything exists as it is today. Um, to Gary's point, we are improving the setbacks. Not quite meeting the standards. I understand that, but the hardship here and the reason for that is we'd love to accommodate what's, what's desired here. But it makes it very difficult, if not impossible, for us to service a well in the future. So the hardship here is. Their inability to use the property as they, they'd like to, uh, because we can't get to that well and service it later with the lesser setback. Uh, with the full ten foot setback. So. That, that's the hardship and the reason for it. Um. You know, the township has. An appeals process for that reason. If they were in a similar position and may very well be in someday, they'll, they'd be requesting the same. So I just wanted to note that. There's no, um. Line of sight interference with regards to the deck or what we're planning because that's staying the way it is. Um, the hardship is the well, um. And the property setbacks are improving from what we have now. Uh, with regards to the engineered plans, absolutely. Of course, that will be required. Um, that's when we submit for the building permit, not when we submit for, uh, zoning review and change. So. Uh, yes, we will be required to submit all of that stuff as needed. Um, but that, that's the, the point that I wanted to make is there was a lot of care given. With respects to the neighbor's privacy. Um, this house is fifteen hundred square feet, so it's not considered. Huge by any means. It could be made bigger and stay in compliance if we didn't have the well issue. Um, so it's. Maybe a, a balanced perspective is needed.
But before, before you adjourn, I, I guess I have one question while we have you about the well. It sounds like you're, you're speaking of that being a hardship. Can you speak more about that as to why it's, um. The way it is and why the, the design reacts to that in such a way?
Yes, certainly. We spent a lot of time working with the health department. The health department has distance requirements, neighboring septic systems, and the well has to be fifty feet away. And if I. This, um, document here shows we only had a very small window. And this is after taking multiple different attempts at alternate, uh, septic systems. So we have an engineered system here, not a standard septic system. So that we can get all of the tolerances that we need. This graph here illustrates the setback requirements. So that well can only be placed in that very small area. And it's, um, there, there's just no way around it and to have it meet the health department requirements. And it's, um, there, there's just no way around it and to have it meet the health department requirements.
And the, the lakefront setback on the Eagle, uh, um, uh, Eagle restriction. And I looked that up. And I noted on your site plan that you were in compliance with that. But I'd like, because I cannot see a measurement and I don't. I can't scale this.
Yep.
Cause it's, I cannot scale it. So, um, it would be helpful for you to tell the commission what is. Um, the existing, um, front yard setback to, uh, the proposed house.
Yeah. So we're at forty feet setback now as I look at this drawing.
You're at forty feet to the front.
Yeah.
Okay. So if it's at forty feet, Mr. Fleas that or Mr. Chairperson, I apologize, that would comply.
Forty feet complies with the front yard.
The front, the minimum front yard setback, and I'm going to verify it. It's my computer went to sleep, but I believe the minimums front yard setback is thirty-five.
Yeah, that's identified at the top of that page there. Again, apologize for the size of the drawings.
Sorry.
I mean, they are scaled drawings. They're just not scalable because of the reduced size here that we got. So.
I don't recall off the top of my head, um, reviewing. An earlier variance, variance request on this property. It's not mentioned in the staff report. I just was curious if anyone had. Recollection of that.
From Mr. Craft's, uh, comment earlier. Yeah, I, I agree too. I'd be nice to have.
I think I can find it for you here in a minute or so.
Okay.
Um.
I think it would be relevant to our discussions to understand what variances, if any, are tied to this property. Even if it wasn't constructed.
Correct.
Is it as December?
December fifth as well. Two thousand twenty-two is what I heard.
I, I don't see it. Um.
Guess I'd like to see the minutes from it. If it truly did happen, but it sounds like we're to Mr. Fink. It's not recorded or. In our records.
I have an August of twenty twenty-two. I have a February of twenty twenty-two. I have a January of twenty twenty-two.
Nothing in December. No December meeting?
Not seeing it. And I, I searched two different ways.
Just so everybody heard that, he, he said January nine, two thousand twenty-three was the recorded meeting.
There's an appeal number here to the hearing date. That helps.
Okay. And Matt, you say you have the same?
Yeah, I do. I'm looking at it now. I can forward it to someone. It's a PDF, Park Township. Decision of Park Township Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, appeal number V twenty-two, zero, zero, three, two. January nine, twenty twenty-three. Gary DeGraff, Carol Muller. Type of request. Two side setbacks. I can read it if you like.
Please.
Would you, would you forward that to me? My email is h fink@parktownship.org. Thank you.
And you want me to forward it now or read this first?
Um.
You can forward it, but I think read it and then I'd like to hear it.
Okay. By Gary DeGraff on behalf of Carol, Carol Muller. To permit a side setback of three point eight feet where ten feet are required. And a side setback of two point nine feet where ten feet are required. For section thirty-eight dash two forty-six of Park Township Quote of Ordinance. Said lands and premises are located at three, three, nine, nine, Maple. Uh, three, eight dash two, four, zero, six of the park, I'm sorry, Avenue Parcel. Number zone R two, Lake Shore Residence District. And E V Edgewood Beach over the district. ZBA findings of fact. A portion of main wall to be altered is reasonable. The structure is less imposing. Uh, than neighbors with regards to roof height, elevation. Square footage, existing privacy fence, onsite comments from neighbors were supportive. Less than five foot setback common in neighborhood. Uh, then ZBA decision approved. Reason for decision request is reasonable and suits neighborhood context. Signed by, it looks like Doug. Okay. Where would you like that forwarded to?
I think I just found it. Um, h fink@park township.org.
So it sounds like we allowed a modification. With a north wall that is currently at two point nine feet.
Yeah. So it was approved as an extensive renovation in addition. Um, now we're pulling those requirements back quite a bit, giving much more distance on both property lines.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking at, on, under the code and there are no. Our zoning board of appeals minutes in twenty twenty-three, but unfortunately, if you look on our website, that. Meeting is two meetings ago from when it was deleted, because we only keep a year's worth online. So somehow there's this literally one or two meeting gap between what's on our active website and what's been. Uh, historic. I don't know if Krista wants to look at it as well, but I can't find it.
We'd have to go to the archives to look.
Well, it'd have to be in, um, in the clerk's office.
Yeah.
I don't see it online here.
Okay.
But I'll, uh, read the.
How long ago was the overlay created for Edgewood? Do we know the year on that?
One of the emails, I believe from the president says twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that, this was actually included in the packet.
Put in place two thousand twenty-two.
Actually saw that.
So unlike some zoning approvals that will essentially expire if they are not constructed. I'm not aware of any language in the township's zoning ordinance that would provide that a variance expires if it's not constructed.
I don't know of any.
So if that's the case, then I feel like it would be appropriate for us to. Have confirmed this, uh, what was approved in. Twenty twenty-three, January twenty twenty-three, after the overlay district went into effect. And to compare that to what is being requested now. Because to the extent we were looking at. ZB was looking at the length of the wall that would be in the non-conforming setback. The height, we don't have that information in front of us to compare whether this would be. Less restrictive, more restrictive. Um, so that combined with the notice going out, um, indicating a five foot setback where the applicant is requesting seven. That further supports Mr. Fink's recommendation to renotice. The meeting to give us an opportu- to renotice the public hearing. Uh, and to take this up after we've had an opportunity to look at the twenty twenty-three variants. And how if at all that affects what you're requesting today.
Yeah, it seems to me that we're comparing two different things though. This is a new, a new build versus an existing. Condition that was being added on to with a really tight setback.
Yeah.
To allow it, but.
Yeah, I did have, um, actually, um, I'm looking at this and I, I did have this when I was writing my staff memo. Um, because I, I, I do recall this liter- this document here specifically. Um, I, I agree with everything Crystal has indicated. Um. So, but, but yeah, I, I, from my perspective as a staff person, um, I did recommend approval of, of, of the variants. And the reason being is I recommended approval because as I indicated previously. It, it does meet the front yard setback and it meets the rear yard setback, which was confirmed. We confirmed the deck and the setbacks around the deck. And from the existing on the site plan, we are becoming more conforming in terms of the north. And to some extent, the south setback, then it, it, then it currently sits and was approved. So. That was the reason, my rationale, um. Respectfully to the residents, that was my rationale for recommending approval is that it is in. Um, it is of, of, um, that there's a greater conformity, uh, with, uh, the standards. And that's not to say that the house didn't get bigger. I acknowledge it did, but in terms of the setbacks, that's what my rationale was. So. Um, but I absolutely would concur with Ms. Morgan, given that that particular section in the application was not in the, the. Packet and that we should probably be safe and just renotice the thing.
Did I hear correctly that once a variance is granted for say the remodel, that that doesn't expire?
That's what I'm hearing. That there was nothing, there's nothing written that tells us that it's expired, but I.
I'll, I'll verify in the code.
Correct. What I stated was I wasn't aware as I sit here tonight of any language in the zoning ordinance that would provide that a variance granted in twenty twenty-three. Would have expired at this point if it had not been constructed. So.
Sure, understand. Okay. The, the point that I just wanted to make to the neighbors is. They can't remodel what's there and leave with the poor setbacks, or we have a choice to improve setbacks and. And with a more current, modern structure. Um, so it seems to be the better of two alternatives, um, but you're able to sort through that too. So.
Actually.
Okay.
Let me, let me, um, rephrase, um, under section thirty-eight dash seventy subsection three. Time limitations on variances. Any person who's granted a variance under this chapter must. Within one year of the date of which the zoning board of appeals take action to grant the variance. Take affirmative action to exercise the rights granted according to the variance for purposes of the section. Um, so, so if the, uh, variance was granted in, um. January of twenty twenty-three, then it would have expired one year later. So I, I.
Right.
I, uh, I take back the, that comment.
Is allowance made because there was aggressive action taken? It just took a long time to get through the permitting process with Eagle. So it, it, it wasn't, there's a over a year and a half long sequence here, working with the department. On this setback issue. So it, it wasn't that they weren't initially trying to resolve this. It's just that a better opportunity came come along. Which again. In our view is an improvement from what we were pursuing before.
It's, it sounds like your request is not piggybacking on any earlier approval. Um, we just were talking about making sure we had the full picture, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
But with that picture expired, I guess I'm wondering, does it, there's no relevance there anymore?
Not if the language is in there that says that it expires.
I think we're still.
For purposes of section, the term affirmative action means either commencing. The use for which the variance has been granting or obtaining all necessary comply- necessary permits and compliance was thirty-eight, section thirty-three. For the construction of a building or structure authorized by variance failure to take affirmative action. And exercising the rights granted according to a variance within one year of the date of which the zoning reports takes action. Uh, to grant the variance will result in the automatic cancellation of the variance granted if the permit granted pursuant to section. Thirty-eight dash thirty-three expires, or if such permit is renewed, the renewed permit expires and the variance pursuant to which the permit was issued so automatically be canceled. I would say at this point, um, this is more of a legal interpretation and I'm not qualified to give it. I would say from the perspective of what is safest for the ZBA would be to consider the previous. Uh, variance, uh, null and void, uh, and either, um, uh. Rule on this current, uh, variance or, um. Uh, as, as indicated postponed for the next meeting.
I, I make a motion to. Void the prior record or reference to the January nine, twenty twenty-three. Variance that was granted due to irrelevance and expiration. So that we can move forward.
To recognize that it's.
Recognize that that is expired.
I do agree with Nick. It is a legal interpretation. I mean, affirmative action was taken. It just took longer to get through the process.
Did you have a building permit? Was there a building permit in hand for the approved remodel?
Uh, no, I don't believe that was the case.
Cause the language.
We can't get a building permit until we go through the Eagle process.
And that took too long.
Uh, yeah, for the problem. That's what, that's what I'm getting at is we wouldn't be able to pull it until we get through the Eagle process for the previous one.
So the language in the zoning ordinance, which is what we are bound by, says all permits have to be obtained. So if there was a practical difficulty in doing that, then it sounds like under the zoning ordinance, there may have been an opportunity for an extension of some kind.
Yeah.
And so we're past that point, it sounds like.
Well, yeah, my only point is that there was aggressive action taken to acquire it. The process just took longer.
Understood.
Which should it, which should have triggered an extension of the variance from from the applicant's standpoint. But moving forward, that's null and void, I think for us to. Be contemplating that is not, is irrelevant at this point. Based on everything I'm hearing.
Sure.
If you can, please. I agree, we do have, we do have drawings that. This is what these are generated from.
For sure, sir, let's not, let's not do that.
So. These these. Sir, the these are, these are drawn engineered architects, architectural drawings drawn from engineer from a civil site plan perspective. But they just happen to be in a small format for us. I think there are questions and we can get to those about where it actually sets on the site, but the the these drawings are to scale, they just are in a small format for us to see. Right. Right, I think there's some missing information that we gotta pursue. So, thank you. But that was to avoid the past information that we were just discussing for the. Um variants. Granted on January nine, two thousand twenty three, so I'm looking for a. Support. To to avoid that discussion.
I don't. Think the Z B A has authority to void it, but if the motion is to recognize that. Under the language of the zoning ordinance, it. Appears to be voided.
Okay. So just.
Maybe.
Our discussion's good enough at this point for the record.
I believe.
That we're acknowledging that it is void.
Okay, I would agree with Ms. Morgan.
So I'm removing my motion. Which takes us back to. Item at hand. For the advertised five feet where it's actually seven feet from what we're hearing, so it is a lesser setback. That's being. Requested. From what we're hearing from the applicant tonight. Guess I am hearing, we heard earlier about. The concerns about the advertisement being an error, so. Guess I'm opening it up for discussion amongst ourselves here if we feel. This is something worth pursuing at the moment, or if we. Do not want to pursue.
I think it should be. Tabled until Ruder readvertises.
That that's gonna be mine, too, I think. We have to have them, correct?
Yeah. I think there's also. I think there's also enough information that just came up. Outside of that setback. Question for the dimension about the front yard. Uh that is. That is compliant, but um. I thought there was another dimension that was. Outstanding here, but I don't think it is.
No, there's no other dimension that is compliant, the front yard is forty feet required of thirty five feet, the rear yard is in compliance with the Eagle setbacks. Um the north and. Uh the south side, uh the south yard setback, uh. I s- uh believe is in compliance and not, I believe it is, and the north uh is has always been and still remains the question of the variance that is in front of you. Um and currently um. Uh the um. Request is for a seven foot variance. Um. As. As the current. Um. Drawn on here, it is. Less, that that meaning that the. The building a house that is of greater level of compliance.
I think the other, the the other error, I guess I was noticing that was causing additional confusion on my end was the staff comments. Uh for the first standard where it talks about the setback being eight feet where ten is required, so I think there's.
Yeah, and that comes from the builders.
That comes from the builders.
Yeah, so it was typed directly from the letter.
I got it.
So. That's not an error, that's just.
That's just a.
Yep.
Trans, you know, transfer of an error. So.
I make a motion to postpone for um. More information. Regarding the setbacks.
A support. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair, if I may, um before we move on to the next item, if this is going to be renoticed for a public hearing, um it sounds to me like. The even though the applicant applied for a deck variance, a deck variance is not required, so I think to avoid confusion. For the public. Or can we acknowledge for the record that that variance request is withdrawn concerning the duck and then that way we don't have to renotice that?
Correct, and I did not notice it for a deck.
Okay.
I saw that as well, I saw that the applicant had applied for a deck variance. I confirmed that and I that because I s- I stared at the site plan for quite some time and confirmed that the the grade of the deck. Where it was uh within the setbacks was less than thirty inches, so I read it as a setback for decks is not necessary. We are only looking at a north. Side yard variance, that's it. Um. Agreed, thank you, Ms. Morgan, thank you.
We had some comments about the duck tonight, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page with that.
I also heard a question about the height tonight, and that also is not. Part of this. Variance request, my understanding is the height is within compliance too. So I just wanted to make that clear too. No, actually, well, I never close public comment officially um. Okay. I'm gonna close public comment at this point. Um thank you all for your comments, appreciate that. But we're gonna take a vote on the motion right now. Thank you. Yeah. Suspended. Okay. Alright, so. There's been a motion to table the item, so public comment is gonna remain open. At this point. So this will carry over into the next meeting. Um where we can further discuss it, but at this, at this point, we need um. Any confirmation and support to. Table. The item before us. I heard a motion. I thought I supported it. Okay. So. Call for the vote, all in favor of tabling? The item? I guess, do we need a roll call for that? Howard? Um. Are all in favor? Um. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, ayes have it. So we have tabled public hearing number one. And that will be clarified for us. So that it can be advertised more properly and that we can have a more intelligent conversation about the setbacks that were in question, so. Alright, we're gonna move on to. Item number two tonight, and Howard, I ask that you can introduce that for us.
Yeah, hopefully we'll do a. I'll be a little. Same player. Um, give me just a moment to get my bearings. Yeah, can I have um? For whatever reason. Yeah. Um well, we're on item number two, which is a request by Tim and Liz English. Um. For a side yard setback of seven feet where ten feet is required, an additional side setback of seven and a half feet where ten feet is required. But I am looking at your packet. And my memo is not in it.
Mine was, mine was a little. It was after the site plan for hearing number one. So the memo was kind of broken in half.
Got it, that's why I'm having trouble finding the memo.
Trying to hit the toes.
I guess so. Yeah, and you.
Mr. Chair didn't have one in his.
The memo's not in here.
I don't. This is, this is what we do.
Yeah. Okay, so I know I wrote it. So it's a request by Tim and Liz English for a side setback of seven feet where ten feet is required and an additional side setback of seven and a half feet where ten feet is required. Section thirty eight two seventy six of the Park Township Code of Ordinances said lands and premises are located at nineteen sixty Lake Street. Um parcel seventy fifteen twenty seven three eighty six zero zero four and in the R three low density residential district.
Alright, thank you, is there anyone here in the public who would like to speak on behalf of? Is the applicant here, you're the applicant?
Hi, we're back. Um Tim English is my wife Liz, uh we previously were here on February fifth, uh we were gonna do a renovation. Um at that time, we were doing setbacks. The building was originally built in the fifties, we were four feet, four inches, uh four feet, six inches off the property line. Um went through the process, got approval. Went through the process of working with the inspector, getting um permitted, we were permitted at the end of August. We started um deconstruction and as you know from a previous time, we were gonna hold part of our. Original building. Move it up. A little higher over the flood plain. Um but as we started pulling things apart, we looked at the way the structure was constructed, we knew we were gonna run into issues. From a code uh standpoint. And as far as we were probably gonna be removing roofs, everything, and at that point, it kind of made sense like. Looking at it and starting over. So at that point, made a call to Mika and said, here's what we're thinking. See if this makes sense or not, what we wanted to do is take the exact same footprint. That we proposed in February and was permitted at the end of August and said, what would happen if we moved this two and a half feet over? Doing that would move. Um. Twenty four feet of our uh structure now is at eleven foot on the setback. And then fifty eight foot would be seven. Foot, two inches, previously that was four feet, four inches on the west setback. With that, um that would move us onto the setback on the east side, and so it was putting thirty four feet. Of our building. Seven foot, nine inches. From our property line. So what we did is um we took into effect. East, north, the south, we're sticking with the same footprint, exact same footprint that we ran past you guys in February. And that was permitted in August.
Mr. Chair. I I don't know where it is, but I am not seeing the memo that I wrote. Um I do not see it in this packet um.
So I will say, Howard, I. The 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 packet that Mika dropped off to me in my mailbox that she hand delivered had it. The mailed version of the packet, mine did not have it in either. So I don't know if anybody else's was like that.
I I don't, because I I wrote a a whole memo on this thing.
Mm hmm.
Um that indicated um that I I was in agreement with the applicant's position in uh. Uh and 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 now I'm just summarizing because I don't have it in front of me, but I was in agreement with the applicant's position. Um that uh moving the property two and a half foot to the east, um uh I I was recommending approval, but I was indicating um. Strongly that there would be conversation around the road end.
Hmm.
Um and that uh moving the property two and a half feet to the east is uh moving it closer to the road end. And that would recommend uh inquiring as to the property owner's um position and uh and uh um. Uh design around the landscaping I and or a small fence. Uh delineating that property from the road end because it it is right up against it, so and it. I I don't see it. I'm looking.
Do all other members have it? I mean.
I have it.
I have it. That is, do you have it? You don't?
Can you speak to the the road end and the delineation?
Our intention is to do a soft landscape. I know a lot of people are putting in retaining walls and that nature, we're going up two feet. But our intention is kind of like some of the neighbors down the road, just kind of gradual. Having a gradual decline in there. And obviously, I mean, right now we have nothing on that side with trees, we actually took the trees out because with the construction. So I mean, obviously there'll be some landscape, but nothing major intrusive. Obviously not a fence because it just, it won't look good.
I I would be very concerned landscaping uh uh landscaping in a road end uh makes it look and uh seem like the property uh that the road end property. Uh is uh the ownership of the owner when it is not. Um so that that was my concern is that we're 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 moving towards the road end. And um those road ends should be protected as public access to the water.
And and I I understand where you're coming from, I guess one thing I would state, this building has been in my family's possession since nineteen seventy four. And we've maintained that road to make it look good and we've never, unlike other fire lanes in that neighborhood, there's no overbuilding, nothing intruding on it.
Would you be willing to? Provide a landscape plan for administrative approval for the township to at least see what it is that is being proposed and. If there are any concerns about that as far as. The appearance of the road end or appearing to limit the. Use of that.
Uh I can do that, are you, are you asking for for preapproval? I mean, I'm not that far.
There should be no landscaping in the road end.
Oh. Yeah.
Yeah, I I I think if they. Whatever landscape plan for their property, not the road end, but to. Submit that for an administrative approval so that. Mika or staff can confirm that there won't be landscaping in the road end and that there won't be a a visual, I guess, barrier.
Makes sense, thank you, Ms. Morgan.
So let me ask you this, when you're talking about that, does that include to my property line or? Over the property? So what if we agree, we're not gonna put anything over the property line?
Then that would probably be sufficient.
I I can tell you that way now.
Yeah, I think that would be sufficient, it's just the concern is to confirm since that is, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, I think the concern is everything's moving that way, so you would think that the landscaping would move too, so we don't. Obviously. Want that. Right.
And I I would ask that on the record that there not be any. Um shore stations, um property, we we do have record of an enforcement letter that was sent that was also indicated in my memo, I I. I don't have it in front of me, but. I don't have it in front of me, but indicated in my memo that there was an enforcement letter sent on this issue, which is why. Not only did I see it on the site plan, but it's why it triggered me to make those comments.
And I see you shaking your head. So you will stipulate to a condition that there be no landscaping in the road end and no personal property? Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm going to open it up for public comment at this moment. If there's anyone to speak for, yes, I welcome you to. Approach the lectern and sign in for us if you could with your name and state your name.
This is my first meeting of this sort, so I hope I'm on task here. I'm at nineteen forty-eight Lake Street, Deborah Secanus. We bought our cottage in nineteen ninety-one, which has since been moved. I guess what is puzzling me is all these exceptions. We are. In the middle of two houses that are on road ends and it just seems like the people on road ends want more. So here's my gripe. If I could just get it out. So before we moved in and bought, the people in our house that were on a road end got clearance to. Build larger, so they're right next to us, but I, I bought, we bought the property and the current owners didn't do it. We didn't do it, but it's just like squish, squish, squish. And yeah, I'm just puzzled by people with road ends just want more and I. Yeah, and the trees that that got taken down, I guess, that's my big question is if they're going to be so tight with the house, will they be replacing trees? Are they gone? Yeah, but I mean, will there be more trees or? Yeah, okay, well, so. Trees are just such a good asset. I. Yeah, yeah, gotcha. I hear you. I just didn't know if your property was be such that you couldn't plant. It would just be landscaping and all barren looking, but. So no, I just don't know how these exceptions happen, but I'm, I'm squished in the middle and so I do appreciate what Howard said about protecting the road ends because that should be accessible to people that. Want to kayak or ice fish or whatever. So thank you just for hearing me out.
Thank you. No problem. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, close public comment and open it for board discussion. Just on that note, I, you know, we are only talking about the, the west, the west side of the property. The east side on the road end edge is still compliant within the setback. Will go down to thirteen feet, right? Oh, wait. Seven foot nine. So that's, that's what we're talking about. I'm sorry.
It's going to make the west side. More.
More conforming now we're.
And the east side less.
Got it. Sorry, I was looking at the dimension at the top of the plan where it says fifteen foot six will be thirteen feet. It, that dimension string is still touching the, the same face of the house. So I didn't, I didn't. That was a little get, little bit confusing to me when I read that. Does anybody else see that? Yeah. So on the hand, the, the attached hand drawing sketch that was in the packet, there's a couple of dimension strings that are crossed off. To kind of demonstrate what was written in the applicant's request here, but. You see, the west side has got two dimensions, four foot six will be seven foot. The south string eight foot six will be eleven foot and then on the east side of the house, the east edge is defined by two different strings too. So. It's the lower, it's the southern string, I guess. I'm not sure where the northern string dimension was taken or should have been taken. The thirteen. But the way. The way it's.
So fifteen. Fifteen, six.
They're both dimensioned to the east face of the building though, is what I, is my point. Do you see that? Or maybe that is. That's the removed. Can you, can you, can you approach the approach right now? I'm going to show you what I'm seeing. So this, this dimension right here looks like it, I thought it was lined up with this edge. This, this edge here. You've got a dimension down here says ten six will be seven nine for that edge with the same dimension string here. I, but I think that is dimension to the existing because the old one says twelve point seven existing, but it.
I have, Mr. Chair, I have my memo now pulled up. I went into the F drive together and I, it is here, but why it wasn't in the packet, I don't know.
I think it's supposed to go over to here. I think, I think it's touching the existing. Okay. It wasn't very clear. Yeah. All right, thank you. No, you're good. Way to go. Okay. All right.
I have my memo in front of me, so anything you'd like, I can, I can give you my recommendation on each of the standards if you wish.
I think we've, I think the memo has got that for us. So I think we're, everybody's had a chance to look at that. I think we're good right now, but.
We received one correspondence. Questioning the width of the home, but just note for the record that we've already addressed the footprint, right, in our previous. Decision concerning this property so that footprint of the home is. We're not here looking at a variance request on the footprint.
Per area?
Correspondence questions, the home being thirty-five feet in width.
Width of the house, yeah.
The required setback. Let's see, it's a newly constructed house can be no wider than thirty feet, but I think that means with. With the required setbacks. So the applicant is not looking to change the footprint from what was previously approved, correct?
Correct. The width remains the same as it was.
Mr. Chair, I just seem to be screwing up most of the night here. I just saw that. I just, I'm now seeing the memo.
Okay, oh, mystery solved. All right. Right.
Everyone's allowed one mistake per year, so you're just.
Take them all again. To, to your point, Ms. Morgan, I think we had two letters, both in opposition.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion if you're willing to entertain one at this.
Yes, please.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the request for a seven foot side back where ten feet is required and an additional side setback of seven point five feet where ten feet is required. Under section thirty-eight dash two-seventy-six of the Code of Ordinances. I've reviewed the staff memo. I agree with staff comments, and so I would propose for the ZBA's findings that with regard to. The first factor in section thirty-eight dash seventy being that strict compliance with the zoning or ordinance regulating the minimum area yard setbacks, frontage height. Bulk or density or other regulation would render conformity with those restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. That we find, given the small size of the lots in the Chippewa Resort subdivision and the prevalence of side yard. Variances and reduced side or setbacks in this area, along with the ZBA having granted a variance previously that the standard is met. Second factor that granting the requested variance would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other properties in the zoning district. Here, the size of the addition is reasonable for the area in question. The ZBA previously granted side yard setbacks for this property and the factors and findings that were made at that time still apply. Also, moving the house two and a half feet to the east is beneficial to the community, to the property, to the west. And the applicant has agreed to a condition, to conditions to protect the road end access. Third, that the plight of the property owner is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not due to general conditions of the zoning district. Staff found that these properties are generally narrow and that many houses in Chippewa are in a similar position. I believe that was the ZBA's. Finding as well when this property came before us previously and that this prop, that this standard may be met. Finally, that the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. Here, the applicant is attempting to. Minimize the variant, side yard variance on the west, thereby increasing the previously approved reduced setback. In addition, we have the presence of the road end and that added to the unique and narrow nature of the lots indicate that this is not a self-created hardship. And therefore, this factor would be met. So I would recommend approval subject to the conditions, which for the record were. No landscaping in the road end, no personal property to be placed or stored in the road end.
We have support. We'll take roll call. If we can. Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Variance passes. Should be getting a letter from Mika. Support that. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our. Next item, which was a tabled item from our, from our last meeting. This was. This was a request by Robert Hastings for an accessory building that was originally nine hundred square feet. Where two hundred ninety-six point two square feet was permitted. And also for, for rear yard setback of ten feet where twenty-five was required. So we've, we tabled that. Back before us tonight is that tabled item. And the applicant. Here has. Revised their request. To a structure that is three hundred ninety-two square feet. Where two hundred ninety-six point two is required. Setbacks remain the same over the request of ten foot rear setback or twenty-five is required. Is there anything to add to that?
Uh, no, sir. I actually wrote the memo of this last month. Although I was not at the meeting, I do recall the application. And. I defer also to Mika's memo that's in the packet. I recall last meeting, it was. Yeah, that's right, that they had requested a nine hundred square foot structure.
Yes. Okay. The applicants here tonight, do you, do you want to speak towards what you've done here and maybe give us a little bit of insight?
Good to see you again.
Yeah.
After tabling last month, we went home, we talked about it and originally it was, you know, asked for yours. But then once we discussed it, it was excessive and so. He did some research and the structure that we want to. You guys have copies of the structure that we want to put up now. It is not a permanent structure.
Yeah, it's not permanent. We had one at our other house where we moved from and it's a. They build them there on site at their place and then they bring them in on flatbed and then they use like a fork truck to pick them up with wheels on the front. And bring them in and they're on like four by six treated timbers. Really just sit on a pad that I'll have in the drawing I made up. It'll be like a crushed limestone. Base on a prepped area.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to inform the applicant. And so, Mr. Lawrence Cerny can correct me if I speak out of turn. I believe that anything above two hundred and fifty square feet under the building code is required to meet code. What you were speaking of is typically not accompanied with stamped engineer drawings. And typically what you were speaking of does not necessarily usually meet snow load. So I would just caution the applicant. That what you were referring to. Might not be. Might not be able to. Get through building review. We are dealing with zoning. This is not building. Construction drawings is the building department. That's after zoning approves it. So how you build it. Is going to be how you build it, but you are going to have to build it to the current. Code and those.
They're going to build it.
That's what I'm trying to say is that.
The packet I presented in that I gave to Mika that had all the drawings of the snow loads and the trusses.
Okay, this is not the board that deals with construction. This is the board that deals with. Zoning, setback, size and things of that nature. That's all a completely separate. Item that is related to the building department.
Nobody ever told us this, or maybe we should have went a different route.
I mean, if they've got snow loads and there's engineering and there's stamped. Information on the snow loads and you should be fine. Just in this area, our snow load is fifty pound snow load as opposed to most areas. In West Michigan are thirty pound snow loads.
Yeah, because right here, there's seventy. Pounds per square feet.
This board doesn't deal with any of that. I'm just giving it to you for your own edification.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So last month versus this month. We were roughly able to put just under three hundred square feet. Which is two percent of the property. So scaling back to less than half at fourteen by twenty-eight. Feet gives us a total of three hundred ninety-two square feet, which is two point six, so point six percent more than what is allowable.
Anything else that you want to share? That's good. Okay, nope, you're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So there is, there's no public comment. Obviously, tonight, we already had it. Open it up for board discussion.
Well, I'd like to thank the applicant for redesigning this and presenting something that. You know, we, we seemed a little shocked last time because we were and this, this hits a little differently. So I appreciate you going back and being thoughtful about that and recognizing that that was. A little more than what, what we would be able to do for you. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question for the applicant.
Yeah, that's great.
Is the inside of that, is that finished with wood or is it open studs? All open studs. Okay. Okay, because like Mr. Pink was saying earlier, you're going to have to go through like a rough in and a final and all that. Yeah, I know you're going to put electrical in it, so you'll need all that open to get all that stuff in there too. So, okay.
Yeah, so, okay.
What is the material on the sides of the structure? The roof and the sides are steel. Okay, and will that be painted? To match the home or? Okay. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think. I think the aesthetic is something to, I think that's pretty what we're kind of looking at a little bit here, it's an oversized. Building that you could just put in your backyard, obviously, right, but um this is kind of what it reminds me of, but in a larger version, so I think it makes some sense to. Have some attention to making sure it's conforming with the aesthetics of the, the home and. It sounds like they're striving towards that, so that's. Good to hear.
I'm sorry?
I, I am, I'm just, I'm looking, I'm, I'm open for anything. For discussion or, go ahead, sorry, Dennis.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion uh to approve the various requests for rear. Uh, setback. And that would be under section thirty-eight dash seventy. Where the first standard is the strict compliance with the zoning ordinance. Regulating the minimum year, yard setbacks, voltage height, bulk and density. Uh, or other regulation. And the greater conformity of those restrictions of the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. And based on the staff comments, given the size of the parcel and the fact that the. Requested accessory structure is only four to two square feet over the line. That would fall upon the structure, there are five-foot rear setback. Uh, strict compliance may be unnecessary. Therefore, I believe the standard may be met. Second standard would be granting the requested variance would do substantial justice to the applicant. As well as other property owners in the zoning district. Um, and the property owner and more consistent justice to the owner property owners in the district. Based on that standard, I believe the new plan is much more in keeping. Both with the requirements of the ordinance and the other similar structures in the neighborhood. Therefore, this standard may be met. The next standard, the plight of the property owner or applicant is due to the unique circumstances of the property. Um, the plight of the property owner is a result of the interaction between the. Jump in the required rear setback based on size in the accessory building section. And the overall size of the property. Although it creates an issue in this instance. Now, it is not a general condition of the building district. Uh, therefore, this standard may have been met. The next standard and final standard for the rear yard setback. Would be the practical difficulties alleged are not self. Created and the conditions on the site predated the current order. And the order has not taken any action that has created a need for a variance. So this standard may also be met.
Alright, thanks Dennis, I, I do have one thing to point out though, as we ran through those, the first standard. That we talked about here, um, for strict compliance, the advertised. The advertised setback being requested says ten foot, but the staff comments say five feet. I think we're looking at ten feet, correct?
This is um a memo that I wrote last month, but Mika wrote this memo this month. Um, so show me where you're referring to.
The first standard on thirty-eight seventy.
Looking at the italicized language under the table, the item where it's introduced. A request, there are Hastings for accessory building, that goes on to say, with a rear yard setback of ten feet or twenty-five feet are required. And then we have a table showing that if the structure is three hundred and fifty square feet or less, so like a five-yard.
Correct.
Five-foot rear yard setback.
Correct.
I think we just need clarification on the applicant requesting ten. Okay, and so that, that was conflicted with, um. Maybe it doesn't conflict, it was just in the staff comments where it talks about a five, five-foot rear yard setback. I think we just want to make sure we were, you know, what, what we were. I just probably missed that.
Yeah. We're asking for ten here, I just wanted to make sure Dennis's comment for the first standard. He, he talked about it qualifying for a five-foot rear setback, which I think is an error, I think it needs to be ten feet.
I'll look up the, and I will look up the code right now.
It's, it's twenty-five. We're asking for ten feet for the rear yard, right? Is that correct? Oh, okay.
How big is the, um?
Three ninety-two, yeah.
Three hundred and ninety-two square feet.
Correct.
The minimum rear yard setback is twenty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
So we just, I just wondered if you were clear that even though the comments are addressing. The five-foot setback for a smaller structure that happens.
Okay, yes. I have support. We'll do roll call on the rear yard setback.
Yes.
This Morgan.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Motion approved for the dimensional rear setback, we've got another administrative approval for the accessory size at this point.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion approve the variance for the accessory building size. And uh. Review the standards in section thirty-eight or ninety-one. Um, the first of which is the area of the accessory building in relation to the size of the lot on which it is placed. And based on the staff's comments, the restricted structure is now two point six percent of the overall size of the parcel. Which is um two point six percent larger than planted. This minimal increase in size may make it uh the standard to be met. The second standard would be the area of the accessory building in relation to the principal building on the lot on which. The accessory building is to be placed. Based on the staff comments, the square footage of the house is uh of one thousand one hundred and forty-four square feet. When attached around to five hundred and twenty-eight square feet for a total footprint of one thousand four hundred and two square feet. This is about twenty-eight percent of the size of the primary structure. And relatively proportional to the context of this neighborhood. So I believe this standard may be met. Uh, the next standard, the location of the accessory building in relation to other buildings on adjoining lots. And in relation to the principal building on the lot. Um, the proposed accessory structure would be around forty-five feet from the neighbor's accessory structure to the rear. And around thirty-five feet from their own house, therefore, I feel that this standard may be met. Now, the next standard would be whether or not the accessory building will affect light and air circulation of any adjoining property. And the accessory structure would not be expected to affect light or air circulation on adjoining properties. So this standard may be met. And finally, whether the accessory building will adversely affect the adjoining property or the views. From the adjoining property. Uh, the revised size of the structure significantly diminishes any impact on the surrounding neighborhood. And would not be expected to have any adverse impact, therefore, I feel that standard may be met as well.
Support. And we have support, thanks Dennis. All right, uh, we'll take a roll call. Please.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, you're. variance is approved. For the accessory building size as well, so. You should be good to go, so you should be hearing back from Mika, sorry, sorry you didn't hear from her uh before this, but uh, yeah, there was. Yep.
I wanted to throw caution to them real quick on one something too, so you're probably thinking about the permitting.
Okay. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna move on to. Should I move on? I'll wait for a second.
Hoping that's what he's covering, cuz he could get. A lot of money and it becomes a big civil lawsuit between the two.
He's talking about snow load.
No, the permitting problem, oh, he's talking about that, so I should talk to him too then. Cuz I'd hate to see him drag that thing in there and then it costs big money cuz something's wrong and he pulled the permit.
Exactly, he's responsible.
Wanted to warn him, dude.
Yeah. I mean, good question.
Okay, our next item, uh, there's in our packet, there's a draft ZBA meeting dates for two thousand twenty-five. Um, I'm not sure if everybody got their eyes on that or not.
Mr. Chair, I am not available July seven, I will be out of state. Other than that, I am available the remainder of the dates.
And I got a minute, I haven't studied this in great detail. Is anybody else?
I will be.
Taking a look.
For the June second meeting. And I'll be gone on the September eighth meeting. I will make all of them.
Sorry Dennis, what was the other, September eight and what?
September eight. And the first one was June second.
June second, sorry, thanks Dennis.
Assuming I get elected.
Nice. Yeah, I'm just. I don't know, Cinco de Mayo on the fifth, I'm not sure I'm available. August four. Sorry guys. I'm gonna say I'm here for, for everything for, right now, but uh. Okay. I don't know that I need to, we don't need to do anything with this at this moment, do we, we're just, this is acknowledging our, our schedule. Everybody's. Gave me their comments, um, I guess we'll open up the public comment and close it since there's no one here. Um, our next meeting, Monday, November eleven, I don't know. We, well, we've just tabled an item tonight, so we're gonna have the tabled item for next time. There's one more. Okay. Yeah, okay. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Support, yeah. All favor, hi. Thanks, everybody.